All right, I believe we're at 5:30. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, a recess meeting on July the 17th, to order. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation by Alderman Vaughn, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom, and thy earth as it is in heaven. Father, God of天地, who future and made service that you allowed your angels to watch over all night long and all day, but you allowed your Holy Spirit to point us back to this place, to Hamlet, these flats of the city, and just want to say thank you for it. Most of all, we thank you, Father, Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, our big brother, our redeemer, our salvation, your only begotten, beloved Son, born of the Virgin Mary, Jesus Christ, our Father, we allow you to crucify our sins every, but in three days, your Son, your rings from the dead sit at the right hand of you, making an exception for sinners in the red church like you lost your son. Your God, who is the season that we are about to make, we just want to say thank you for Jesus. But we ask you that you will please, for there was a wall out in the city that's been on and under, seen and unseen, and blood out of transgression. Father, we pray that you would just fill us with your Holy Spirit, and you would fill this place with your Holy Spirit. You would take the rings of our minds, Father, and you would take every decision and place it in our heart. And every decision that we make, we glorify you, becoming the family, but most of all, our big brother, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We give all praise and honor and glory to you, God, because of whom you are the one. Thank you, your God, so much for being our God and being your servant, being our Father and being our children. We can't, can't thank you enough for controlling our destiny, for not leaving us in the hands of man. We give all honor and praise and glory to you, God, because of whom you are the one.
All right, thank you, everyone. And it's noted that Alderman Little?
Yes, okay.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Little is attending telephonically, so we will be a roll call vote for all votes. And we now move to the official agenda with consented items. And I do have one adjustment that needs to be made under item 15G1, which is under Human Resources, authorization to hire Will Simon and Caitlin Holzum. Caitlin Holzum needs to be removed from that particular item if we leave it on consent, so. Yes, just a second, let me see. That was it. So, yes, do we have any changes to the agenda? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of changes. My mic will come working this time. Mayor, under Roman numeral four, this third item, I want to pull the minutes off from July 2, 2018.
July the 3rd of 2018, okay. Remove those from consent.
Under Roman numeral nine, Mayor, I want to remove that item from consent.
Okay.
And finally, Mayor, I want to add one item to the consent agenda. And once I find it, it is under Roman numeral 14A. And the consent item is, I want to move approval of Gary Logan Jr. as Director of Parks and Recreation Department at an annual salary of $70,000 with a six-month probationary period effective immediately.
All right, so your motion is to take the item, which is 14, Board Business A, to read as consideration of the appointment of Gary Logan as Director of Parks and Recreation with a $70,000 salary and a six-month probationary period. Is that correct?
With the words "effective immediately."
Effective immediately, okay.
Mayor, I object.
I'm sorry, you object to that? Okay.
Well, just...
To the...
The precedent.
To the being on consent, is that correct?
Right, no consent, just leave it as it is.
Okay, so we have an objection to that, Vice Mayor, so we will leave it as it is, and we can take that up when it becomes part of a discussion.
Okay, Mayor, one other item. I see that there's two items on the agenda with personnel, and I'm sure when we get to closed session, they will discuss it. And I don't know why the first item is up. If it's discuss the matter of the applicants, or what I don't think we could discuss would be that the only personnel, unless there's something pressing beyond the person as the subject matter of the hire. I thought that that's why we expended the last meeting to have all the discussion we need. I don't know what's the... I'm trying to question the need. I'm asking to remove that item 12 from the executive session at the top of the agenda unless there's some, something that's urgent, necessaries to have an executive session at the top of the meeting. And if it's discuss something with Parks and Recreation, I thought that's why we had the last meeting to flesh that out then. So I don't know what else is it to discuss, but I don't know what that's about. I'm trying to see, is there a need for two executive session on personnel? We got one, Roman numeral 12A, and got one at the end. And I'm just trying to figure out why we need two. Do we need to remove one of them, or we're going to need to keep both of them? I'm just trying to see why we're amending the agenda. And I would like to get some clarity on why we have one at the top of the agenda.
Is that a question?
Yeah, that's a question. I want some clarity on why we have...
Okay. The reasoning was because in preparation of considering the appointment of Parks and Recreation, we wanted to have a discussion related to the structure and the performance of the potential hirer. So, that's...
Okay, one last question for you on the floor. Attorney, I know we can discuss personnel, which is a legal topic to discuss in an executive session, but we'll cross that bridge and get there, but I will make sure we are fully transparent and fully accountable as the open meetings law requires. As to discuss structure, I don't know whether that fits under the exception. I know we can discuss personnel, you know, like specific job performance that relate to an employee, but I'm not aware of any specific language to say we can go in and discuss the structure of the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. I think that needs to be, that clearly, in my opinion, does not qualify for executive session, but if the mayor is telling me that you want to go into discussions purely the job performance of a specific already existing city employee, then that qualifies, but we cannot go in to discuss the structure of the department. Am I incorrect or correct?
Correct.
Thank you. You, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any further, any further amendments or adjustments to the agenda or consented agenda items? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to...
Same.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented agenda items as revised?
Same.
Okay. A motion from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Sistrunk. Okay, and we will need a roll call vote, as you would answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, by a vote of seven to none, the vote, the motion carries. We have the agenda approved with consented items, and I will now read those consented items. Under item four, approval of the minutes, we have consideration of the minutes of the June 19, 2018 recess meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. We have consideration of the minutes of the June 29, 2018 work session of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. We have, under Department Business Planning, A, consideration of a contract between the City of Starkville and the Carls Small Town Center, Mississippi State University, completed downtown Starkville design project. We have B, consideration of the appointment of Pete Melby, the sole applicant for the vacancy of the Starkville Tree Advisory Board for a four-year term to begin on July the 18th, 2018. C, discussion consideration of choosing the qualifications of the consulting firm Farmer Morgan to complete and apply for U.S. Department of Transportation Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development Grant Bill and Appalachian Region Commission Grants for the improvements to the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive Highway 182 corridor. D, resolution giving the consulting firm of Farmer Morgan the authorization to file a Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development Bill Grant Application for the City. Under Engineering, we have number one, consideration of approval of the ARC Mill Street Improvement Project, accepting the low bid from Phillips Contracting and authorization for the mayor to execute the contract contingent upon arrival of ARC funding. Two, consideration of approval of additional local matching funds totaling $7,894 for the Appalachian Regional Commission ARC Mill Street Improvement Project. Three, consideration of installation of an always stop at the Carver Drive and Long Street intersection. Four, consideration of installation of an always stop at the Willow Road and Sycamore Road intersection. Under Finance Administration, we have number two, request acceptance of the June financial reports. Number three is consideration of the low bid from Trustmark Corporation in the amount of $193,500 over six years at 3.43% interest for the lease purchase of a JCB 110W rubber tire excavator to be used by the Starkville Street Department. Under Fire Department, we have request permission to purchase a workout equipment from Rogue Equipment, the lower and best quote for Fire Station Two, in the amount of $23,975.43 with funds from the Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthy You Grant at no cost to the city. Number two is request permission to purchase a scuba, scuba equipment from the Sunbelt Fire to replace obsolete and failing compressor system in the amount of $7,387.89 at state contract price with funds from the FEMA Firefighter Assistant Grant. Number three is request permission to purchase a scuba compressor system, compressor system, from Central Alabama Training Solution to replace obsolete and failing compressor system in the amount of $61,255 state contract price with funds from the FEMA Firefighter Assistant Grant. Under Human Resources, we have request authorization to hire Will Simon as a certified police officer for the Starkville Police Department. Number two is request authorization to hire Chris Keel as the office manager in the Starkville Utilities Department. Number three is request authorization to advertise for a maintenance worker in the Sanitation Environmental Services Department. Four is request authorization to advertise for the accounting manager in the Starkville Utilities Department. And five, consideration of approval to select Tyler Executime as sole source compatible software with current payroll at a cost of $40,589 and frontline as the lower quote for job application and scheduling software at a cost of $10,700. Under Parks, number one is consideration of approval of the Facility Use Agreement with the Starkville Cowboys Association for use of an athletic field for their football and cheer programs. Two is consideration of the approval of the Facility Use Agreement with the Starkville Saints Organization for use of an athletic field for their football and cheer programs. Under Police Department, we have number one, request authorization to enter a lease agreement with Harley Davidson of Central Mississippi for two Harley Davidson motorcycles. And under L Utilities Department, number one, request approval to accept the lowest and best bids received for the July 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018 Source of Supply Listing for Starkville Utilities Water Division. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, my pleasure. Then we have the, let's see, wait a minute. Skip the page, sorry, guys. There we go. All right, first item up is the consideration of the minutes of the July 3, 2018 regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi.
Move approval.
Okay, that was, that was in stereo. Thank you very much. Alderman Miller, did I hear a motion from you?
Yes.
Okay, and I have a second from Alderman Walker. Discussion. Vice Mayor, do you have some discussion regarding this item?
I'm not seeking to be recognized.
No, you're not. I just wanted to double check. All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, if you would, please say yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, by a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Thank you. All right, we have, next we move to announcements and comments, and I have no comments from the mayor's role that I can think of that I need to be talking about, so do we have any comments from the Board of Alderman? Alderman Vaughn.
I just wonder where everybody don't forget your invitation that you have to the ribbon cutting for Roosevelt Taylor, changing from Beta Street to Roosevelt Taylor Street. I think it's going to be here good, because for a man who lived 93 years, I think it's always a blessing to honor people while they're living instead of dying. So, all of you got received invitation. I hope that you all show up and help celebrate that day for them.
Actually, it's at 10 o'clock, right?
10 o'clock.
On Thursday?
On Thursday.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for reminding us of that. Okay, any other announcements from board members? Alderman Vaughn?
Mayor, I think we have a new employee that Mr. Kemp, would you like to recognize?
Oh, we... I'm sorry, I usually have a, have a notation that I need to be talking...
No.
I just want to schedule a little...
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, by recognize?
Vice Mayor?
And I want to join in on the comment that Mr. Alderman Miller just made. Mr. Kemp, I know, when I was coming in, I saw him there. Since he's here, Mayor, I'd like for him to come down. You can make official recognition whenever you want to, but I want, since he's made here tonight, I want him to enjoy meeting him. Mr. Kemp, I want to just say hello to us. If Mayor introduces when she gets ready.
Sir, well, no, I generally wait to get a little bio to go with it.
Okay, well, come on, come on up, come on up.
We'll put you on the spot and make you tell us about yourself.
Yeah.
You can do that. All right, Mr. Kemp, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I'd just say that we're glad that Jacob Forster is going in, was selected to be the system manager. He's got a real strong history in engineering and actually worked in that environment. And it probably will be good to let Jacob kind of do a little introduction about his, what he is today. And he's already been on the job for about a week, and he's already been heavily involved in activity that we had planned to unfold infrastructure.
Okay. Jacob, why don't you come over here to the podium, that way we'll have a mic and we can hear you better.
Well, Mayor, Alderman people, we, I so appreciate your trust in me and your willingness to support me in this role. I'm very much looking forward to helping as much as I possibly can help the Utilities Department and hopefully have some good successes as we get geared up to replace a lot of this infrastructure, you know. And I'm looking forward to that. My background, just briefly, I worked for Calipso Spreading Engineers in West Point from the time I was 21, I believe. It's been a few years ago until I finished school, and then I went to work with them for a while doing design work, got my professional license. Mississippi State hired me as a construction administrator at that juncture, somewhere around 28, I suppose, and went to work for them overseeing the capital improvement projects at Mississippi State. And subsequent to that, they asked me to serve as interim associate director of utilities there, hired me into that position fully in April of 2017, and I have fortunately found myself here, and I'm looking forward to doing some, some really good work for the City of Starkville.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate your, your being here and helping carry out. And while we're at it, let's go ahead and talk about that 10-foot hole that we've got at Spring, Spring Street and Highway 12. Yeah. And we don't know yet if we're going to have that covered up, but at the point right now, we have a very large hole at Spring Street and 12 that we have got cones around and that we are being protective of, but we are working hard to get that taken care of. It was a leak that's been ongoing for a while. You want to add to that at all?
Just a little bit, this is a reoccurring moisture problem. We started in today after about 10 feet down. We identified it's a little bigger project than we thought. And you're right, we have been very mindful of safety and security around that. We will not complete the job today. It may actually be finished in a week or two, but our plan right now is to fully identify where the leak occurs and then make a replacement. So, we'll probably affect, and you'll see activity on both sides of 12 over near Hampton End before the project is finished, as well as in front of Chick-fil-A.
Okay. And we've put that out on social media, and obviously we'll continue to talk about it and keep safety in mind, but it is a project that, that will be disruptive for a little bit, but we will get it done as soon as we can.
And we're working with the street department to coordinate streets, and also M.D. has been engaged in that so that they'll kind of know what that's going to relate to 12 and the impact on that project that we're trying to finish at that intersection.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
And I know that, I know that there are orange cones. I saw plenty of them this afternoon. Are there barricades or something bigger for people who are maybe not aware?
We're actually installing concrete barriers.
Great, great, great.
And if we can get it closed up, we will remove that, but until the hole, as long as the hole is open, we'll have barricades up.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much. All right, any other Board of Alderman comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move into citizen comments. This is the opportunity for citizens to come forward, and you have three minutes to share your thoughts and concerns with the, with the board.
All right, good evening. My name is Abbot Tunnell.
What's up?
All right. I want to recognize the mayor and the police chief and the NACP president for our safety.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
My mom, she gave me good advice as I was growing up and dealing with the public. She didn't want me to be Uncle Tom, and she didn't want me to be ditch digger. So, I thank mom for that advice. Citizens have some concerns that vary. We read the paper about one of the officers being attacked by a suspect. That's not good. We also read the paper where a teenager was holding people at gunpoint in, in, you know, complex. We also read the paper about people in town. And, but what really got us is, is we'd like for the chief to help us out, because we don't know what panhandling is. But then we read the paper about an armed person panhandling on Highway 12.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Chief, would you like to give us a little bit of information about that? That's not something that I had heard about.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mayor, Vice Mayor, board members. We talk about panhandling, we're talking about like more or less begging and laundering in an area where, you know, you're not wanted. So, I think he's referencing the incident where the gentleman was in the area of Zaxby's, and he did brandish a weapon, and we ended up catching him at his house. Remember that?
Yes.
Yeah. Of course, we put it on social media and everything, but that's what he was doing. He was actually begging for money. Yeah. And the gun he had was a toy gun, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, any other citizen comments? If you would, identify yourself, please, sir.
Andrew Stevens, Ward Three. Honorable Alderman, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm here to encourage you to amend the proposed parking ordinance by striking item 3D, which stipulates that recreational vehicles cannot be used as a dwelling. First of all, this rule is fundamentally about housing, not parking. It should not be hidden in an obscure part of the city code, but should be debated clearly as what it is, housing policy. Second, I think the rule is unwise. This ordinance has the potential to impact those of our citizens most at risk, students and those near homelessness. Let us not make it even harder to be poor in Starkville. I encourage you to consider the unintended consequences of this ordinance and to avoid an unforced error. Amend the ordinance to strike item 3D. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for citizen's comments?
Any mayor, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Ward seven, Alderman, Henry Vaughn, that's what water I live in. First, I want to be speaking as a citizen of Ward seven, and I want to thank the street department. And you talking about Mr. Forster back there, well, he went into action today. I made a complaint, and about afternoon, it was done. He prevented a larger problem. We really needed that money for the infrastructure, folks. So, if y'all got to add some more to it, you need to do it. Okay, now I'll put on my other hat as President of Tip Out County NAACP. We will be conducting voter registration drive between now and October the 6th. Reason October 6th is, that's 30 days before the next major election. You know, it's kind of embarrassing that we electing people in office with 20% of the votes, or 15% of the votes. So, we're going to be hitting the streets hard. We partnered with other organizations, so if you want to get with us, just contact our Tip Out County NAACP, Chris Taylor. I'm in the paper, I'm not hard to find. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And I'll echo that. We really do. I can't imagine us not, not having stronger voting turnout than we have, so. Okay, anyone else? Citizens comments? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will move to a public hearing. We have a second public hearing and consideration of updating Chapter 62, Floods Article 2, Flood Damage Prevention, the Code of Ordinances, City of Starkville, Mississippi, to meet Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA 44 CFR requirements. And we will hold this second public hearing. Consideration is also, is also a part of this same item. So, first let me open it. Well, anyone on the board have any comments to make before I open it as a public hearing? Okay, seeing none. I will open it as a public hearing. Usually you have the opportunity to have 15 minutes on the pro side and then 15 minutes on the con side. So, if anyone wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance, would you please come now and, and give us your thoughts? Anyone? Okay, seeing none. If anyone wishes to speak against the changes to this ordinance, which by the way are mostly a housekeeping element so that we can stay in compliance. But if anyone wishes to speak against it, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. And we're to point now, if there's no further discussion from the board, we need a motion. Okay.
Where are they?
It's second public hearing and consideration on. Is updating that Chapter 62 ordinance?
I move that we update Chapter 62 as described.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none, if you would, please answer the city clerk, yea or nay, as she calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, by your announcement vote, motion carries, and that Flood Damage Prevention Code of Ordinances will be updated, and we will take the appropriate action to get that updated on our website and with, with municipal code. All right, under Mayor's Business, this is consideration of becoming an affiliate with the Wildflower Trails of Mississippi program and establishing a wildflower test area within the wider way of Starkville, Mississippi. By way of explanation, this is an opportunity for us to continue to increase our beautification efforts around town. This is something that Keep Mississippi Beautiful and Starkville is a part of the Keep, Keep that, you know, Keep America Beautiful, Keep Mississippi Beautiful, and we are Keep Starkville Beautiful. We have that organization. And the Keep Mississippi Beautiful organization will assist us in planting wildflowers in areas that are normally mowed by us. So, from my perspective, it was a beautification opportunity as well as a cost-saving opportunity, because if we don't have to mow them, other than about once or maybe twice a year, and we can from that get color and some attractive wildflowers that are native to Mississippi, then it gives us an opportunity to enhance our roads and our byways. And we have to choose those areas, but we have not done that yet. This is merely an opportunity for the board to agree that this is something that we are willing to do for some test areas. So, Alderman Miller, I see your hand.
Mayor, I move approval.
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Walker. Do I have any further discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Walker.
I'd just like to say, I think this is a great opportunity for us to establish this affiliation, and I look forward to continuing the discussion where we're going to decide where the test areas would be. I think we have lots of, lots of opportunity around major interchanges, another thing to not only, like you said, make our city a little more beautiful, but also potentially change some, a maintenance routine which may have some economic impact.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. That, I agree, and there is an opportunity, as we become known for so many things, whether it's culinary or sports or whatever, for us to also become a member of that Wildflower Trails program and become known for that beautification effort. So, I'm excited about that. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, could I get a motion? I've got a motion, I'm sorry. We will, if you answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderwoman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, by a vote of six to one. All right, by a vote of six to one, motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, we next have, under our agenda, we have a, going into a closed determination session. Do I have a motion to go into a closed determination?
What are we determining?
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Miller. Now, that was a discussion item you wanted to ask?
Yes, what are we determining?
We are, whether or not to go into executive session.
We can, same order.
Well, yeah, personnel item. It's a personnel item related to the Parks and Recreation Department. I have a motion and a second further discussion? All right, if you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
I think that was a yea. Is that a yea, Alderman Little?
Yea.
Okay.
Correct, yea.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, by a vote of six to one, motion carries. If you would, please exit the room and allow us to determine the need to go into. Okay, everybody back in? All right. The next item on the agenda is consideration of appointing the Director of Parks and Recreation. I have Mr. Carver's hand. Alderman Carver.
Well, I guess my question before I make a motion was, would the board like to discuss this further? Maybe Alderman Miller, if you had any more questions, she said you want to have an open discussion about, or you said previously you may want to have some kind of discussion or something pertaining to what we, the interview process that we had the other night.
No, I think, I think the items I was referring to were, were for executive session. So it's not anything I'd want to discuss.
Yeah. I'd say I was really pleased with all four candidates. We had a gentleman, this Mr. says, name what, Mr. Digby White.
Don't hurt Digby White.
Was an individual that we all kind of said, wow, he's been on the World Urban Parks Board and Director at some point. And, and just to have an individual of that caliber to come and, and to apply in this town spoke, spoke volumes of where Starkville's going. This is going to be a hire, I think, in my personal opinion. It's going to take somebody with some visionary skills, some philanthropy background, some ways to create unity within the community and the quality of life issues that we've got coming up. Where park system, in my opinion, is at a fulcrum right now. It's at a fulcrum that's fixing to increase dramatically over the next few years. There was one individual, it was Mr. Ed Smith, that stood out to me. There's no, nothing personal, I've got another candidate here tonight, but somebody who has been at Gwinnett County, which is the number one county in the nation, voted several times, has equestrian programs, walking trails, went and did some research on this gentleman, has extensive philanthropy background, fundraising background, and actually is, is, you know, I've heard some people argue that maybe, I don't know how you know somebody at the end of their career, at the start of their career or what, but somebody who's trying to get back home, somebody who's a community-minded individual and has roots here, who's, who graduated from Mississippi State University. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Smith effective immediately at a salary of seventy thousand dollars.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Miller to that motion. Further discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Alderman Carver. I agree that we interviewed, I think, four really quality applicants, from Dr. Digby White to, to Mr. Burton, to Mr. Logan and to Mr. Smith. I think each of those would be capable of handling and running our Parks Department. And so this is a really tough, tough decision that, that we're about to make tonight. While nobody has a crystal ball that can see what the, the future is going to hold, I agree, I think Mr. Smith brings a wealth of experience. I think he certainly has been around and has the capability of, of leading our Parks Department. I believe that several of the other candidates do as well. I don't know that we can make a, a bad choice right here moving forward. I think we have a, a good choice to make. I think we had four quality candidates and we'll see how the, the vote goes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other discussion?
I will say one more comment. For those that sit on this side of the table and have, and we've got a lot of elected officials out in the community, if you want a transparent government, this is how it works. This is a body here that, that chose not to go into executive session. It's never, it's never easy. It's not, and I think y'all know that. It's, but to make these decisions is why we get elected, so I want to commend each and every person at this table. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Alderman Sistrum?
I'd like to say that earlier Alderman Carver intimated that perhaps the votes were settled. And I, I would like to say that I don't think that's, I don't think that's the case. As a matter of fact, I'm not quite sure how I'm going to vote when, when, when it gets my turn to vote. So I think that sometimes there is a, a perception that deals are done behind the scenes, that things are put into place, and I, I don't think that's as true as often as people think that it is.
Thank you. While we're down at that end of the table, Alderman Little, I don't want, I want to make sure you feel comfortable speaking if you have anything to say, so.
I'm here, Mayor, thank you. I, I, I'm glad we waited a week. Had a week to chew on ponder it, because I kind of bounced around and came back to where I'm going to land tonight. But I think last week Alderman Carver telegraphed to Eli, it was right there when he gave his ranking. So I chewed on it for a week, bounced around a little bit, and we'll see where it takes us.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further discussion? Anyone wishing to speak about this matter at this point in time? Other end of the table, don't want to leave y'all out. Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. It would be to appoint Mr. Smith, Director of Parks and Rec at a salary of seventy thousand dollars, effective immediately. Is that with a six-month probationary period?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. If you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Nay.
Alderman Walker.
Nay.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of three to four, motion fails.
Mayor?
Alderman Carver.
I'd like to make that same motion, but for Mr. Gary Logan. Second.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Gary Logan to be appointed Director of Parks and Recreation at seventy thousand dollars a year, six-month probation, and effective immediately. Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a motion and a second from Alderman Miller. Further discussion? Alderman Sistrum.
Mayor?
I've got Alderman Sistrum and then you, Alderman Little.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to say that I can absolutely be supportive of, of Mr. Logan as our Parks Director. I think that that salary does not necessarily reflect his current experience or where we need that position to be with him as our appointment.
All right, thank you, Alderman Miller. Did I, I'm sorry, I, I had promised Alderman Little.
That's fine.
Alderman Little?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman Sistrum. I think with Alderman Carver's first selection, that, that salary made it more commensurate with his salary, with his career at this juncture. However, the city attorney's holding a copy of my motion, so I am supportive of, of Mr. Gary Logan for this position, however, I'm not supportive at a seventy thousand dollar salary. I would be open to the lower end of sixty-two, sixty-two-five range, but not the seventy. So if we stick to the seventy, I will not be supportive of that tonight.
Do you want to offer a friendly amendment?
I will, I will.
We'll offer an amendment, we'll see if it's friendly?
I will offer that, if accepted, sure.
Okay, for, what, what amount do you wish to amend it?
The salary sixty-two-five.
Sixty-two-five. All right, Alderman Carver, is that a motion, or you can, all right, that, is that?
I'll support it.
Okay, so we have a support for the friendly amendment. Okay, and Alderman Miller, you asked for the floor.
Yeah, well, I had a question. The, the previous, we had a probation period? We're having a probation period on this one as well for six months? Okay, and we've done the salary sixty-two-five?
Yes.
Right. Okay, I wanted to clarify, that, Alderman Little beat me to it, so that was mine.
Okay, all right. Alderman Walker.
I just want to, is it nav here? What is the, what is the range that was advertised for that position?
Speaking one thousand, one hundred and twenty-two to seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one.
Thank you.
We have discussion down at the other end of the table? Okay, Alderman Miller?
I wanted to go ahead and say, before we take a vote, Gary, I think you've done a great job. The parks have run well. I think you're going to bring a lot of energy into the Parks and Rec Department and do a lot of great things moving forward, so I'm looking forward to it. I'm going to support you in this, so.
Okay, all right, do I have any further discussion? Alderman, Vice Mayor Perkins.
Mayor, let me briefly say, I certainly want to be consistent, as I have been in excess of a quarter of a century, on things that I have done here at this table. I'd like to say I stand behind and support the seventy thousand that I offered earlier. And the reason I did that, because I want to make sure that we treat this department head, in my opinion, fair, just, and equitable. The board has, in the past, on an average, provided at least a starting salary for a substantial number of department heads at an annual salary of seventy thousand dollars. This board has a very rich history of promoting qualified individuals and personnel upward in our place of employment. The sixty-two thousand dollars thereabout that is being offered by my distinguished colleague is certainly within the realm of the salary that has been allotted by the board. However, that dollar amount, given this applicant's experience and qualification and background, is certainly a lot less than what the board has paid a number of other applicants who have moved internally upward. So given the, the applicants and the person who is the subject matter of this motion almost rise to the top, and, and given the salary that the person now makes on an annual basis, we need to be fair, equitable, and just. You want him to take this department to the top of Mount Everest. You want him to, to compete with the world. You want him to build a superb park at Cornerstone and other places. You want this person to fulfill all dreams of every type, form, kind, whatsoever. So with those expectations, it is my opinion and given my experiences, that requires a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of expertise. So I want to be fair to this applicant. So I want to be fair to this applicant and to every other applicant, just like I have done in the past. So even if you do not reach the $70,000 mark, which I think you should, this board, this applicant has done a very fine job, in my opinion, in an interim basis. The board has given this applicant a number of tasks, and based on my keen recollection, that there's never been any demise or any diminution in the performance of duty, has gone beyond the call of duty. Matter of fact, he's gone into a number of associations, a number of events, has traveled across the globe with a unanimous vote, almost, if not in all cases, from this Honorable Mayor and Board of Aldermen. So, you know, let's keep in mind that, you know, when he gets there, you know, we want him to come in almost on a very minimum salary, but, but yet, we're going to have a premium level of expectation from this department head. So I think that this salary, I think, which proposed, if my memory is right, about 62, I know it's much less than 62.5, and, and even looking at our current structure of salaries, even some department heads, you know, who, and just came in not many years ago, or months ago, I mean, is making way in excess of, but as a starting salary, this is relatively low, given this applicant's background. And of course, when, as we all know, when you look at one's salary, you got to look at his experience, his ability, and then, you know, and there are some non-department heads in some departments who are, if you saw him at 62,000, is making more than this, I can, you know, I'm not going to take the time to do this, you have some non-department head employees who are making more than $62,000. I think that's a correct statement. At least, we have, you know, we have some that are making more than this. So this is the department-level position, and this board is moving in a direction of wanting to take our parks, want to bring national tournaments, want to bring regional tournaments, want to attract people here. In order to do that, you know, we need to be fair to this individual. We need to treat him right, we need to pay him right, we just need to give him a proper compensation, because he's going to be expected to go above and beyond the call of duty. That it, you know, that's just the bottom line. I'm not supporting any particular individual, I just want to be right. I came here promoting fairness, I'm going to leave here supporting fairness. I'm going to leave here with a track record that I gave the best for everybody, everybody, regardless of who you are, where you live, you need to be treated right. And this is not treating this person right. Whether you like me or not, I, I have said it, I'm going to continue to say it, I know there are those who disagree with me, but I don't care. I have the least worry about that. So when I go to 620 Hospital Road, Mr. Ware, you know, you would go to church, I just called your name out, when I go to 620 Hospital Road, I'm going to sleep good tonight, because I gave the best for this young man. I'm sure the others are going to say the same thing, but I'm going to give the best of service for treating people right, and $62,000 is not enough for this job, and we're going to ask this employee to stand on top of Mount Everest and, and perform high and exceedingly high expectation, and certainly he's going to do that, whatever salary you hire him at, hire him at. But be fair to him, treat him right. How would you, would you take this job for that dollar amount with all these expectations? Would you do that? Ask yourself that question. Would I do it? No, I wouldn't. So since I wouldn't, I want to make sure I treat him right. So this message, I'm not, I'm not belittling anybody, I'm just speaking to the public now, I'm not talking to, now, to anybody, I'm, I'm speaking very professionally, it's not directed toward the mayor, no colleagues, I'm just talking, just general talk to the public. I just want to make sure I'm on record, and, and this is not directed toward anybody. I have great respect for the mayor, all my colleagues at this table, but I want to make sure when I'm, you know, that, while I'm here performing my duties, and I say nobody else is not doing theirs, that I want to make sure that this record, Mr. Clements, when you put all this in the archives, I want to make, be real clear, everybody in this hearing, man, that I'm, I'm treating everybody right. And it's wrong to pay this man 62,000, this, this person $62,000, thereabout, with all these kind of duties. We're talking about the master plan, the consultant, bring these people in, acquiring additional and, I bet he can't have rest, talking about parks, you know, he got to get paid for this. Can't expect this man to do Cal Act services at, at a Volkswagen price. It costs to, to generate these, these people with this type of experience. So for all these reasons, now, the motion is to keep, I'm not going to vote against it now, but I want to be clear, I want to vote for this person, that's why I offered the $70,000, because it's consistent with everybody, but now, if you, the motion's 62, I'm going to vote for it, but I want it to be clear why, what I think it should be. So, Mayor, I wasn't intending to say anything else tonight, but I had to speak up for fairness. So I'm, I'm through talking for the night, and, and I'm going to yield this floor, and I feel good about what I said, and I'm, I'm resting peace for the rest of this meeting, and I'm going to vote for this applicant, regardless of what this motion is going to be, but I, one thing I know, I'm speaking up for, for, for what is right, for what is fair, for what is just, and that's what I'm, that's in my heart, I feel that way, I deliberated about this, and that's the right thing to do, these are not no impromptu comments. So I'm, I'm yielding the floor, so the Vice Mayor has nothing further to say tonight, not in no negative way, but I'm, I'm yielding the floor for the evening, but, but that's the subject matter of my comments, whatever y'all want to do, I'm going to vote for this gentleman, if you vote for 55,000, I'm voting for it, whatever you vote for it, he's, because I think he's the first for the job, so, but again, so I yield the floor now, it's not, nothing negative, one, two, the Aldermen from my other colleagues on this board, Aldermen from the other wards, now, nothing negative, but I just want to make sure I'm clear, nothing negative, the mayor, but we're all professional, we speak with class and dignity and honor up here. And Mr. Reporter, I say you smile, hopefully you, you want to be neutral and biased as you sit here in this room now. You don't be smiling while I'm talking. I'm talking about the reporter from the Starkwood Dispatch, y'all be fair out there, this is, you got to engage in fair reporting. Now, you're the floor, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alex, you may smile while you want to. All right, Alderman Sistrunk.
And I was going to say the same thing, feel free to smile at me. Nav, when we advertised the position, how many years of experience did we list as desired for this position?
I believe it was three to five.
Three to five years, and, and that would have typically come in at the lower end of the, the range, if somebody met those minimum, yeah. And Mr. Logan has, how many years, Mr. Logan, you want to?
Nine after December.
Okay. I, I think in the interest of keeping us at a point where we have, where we have gotten, which is with normalized salaries, with looking at positions and where people need to come in, it, it sounds like perhaps 62.5 was too low, and that we should, we should be looking at a number that's in that mid-range. So if I may, may I make a friendly amendment to, to change that salary to 66, which is in the mid-range?
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment to 66. We have, the motion came from Alderman Carver. Sorry, thank you. Is that all right with you?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. The second from Alderman Miller?
I'll rescind my second.
Okay, you rescind your second. Do we have someone who wishes to?
Second.
Alderman Vaughn, the second to the 66. Is that correct? You keeping up with this, Attorney Land? Yes, Alderman Carver.
I'm going to say this, Mr. Logan, I'll say that I guess if you, if you get hired tonight, these are comments that you learned your first, first lesson in, in being a public servant, is not to take anything personally. So the reason that you moved to number two on my list, and I wrote this down because I didn't want to miss a word, the reason that you moved to number two on my list is your education, educational experience, which you spoke to in, in your history with College Station in Texas, and having the opportunity to watch you steer the ship in the last few months, between you and Mr. Hems and Mr. Pochip and everyone involved, I think, personally, from playing on the field, my son, and, and the comments that I get, I think the fields have gotten 10 times better, and there's a long way to go. There is great, I'm underlining, there's great comfort in hiring you tonight, just from the fact that when you get that opportunity to hire internally, at this point in your career, you've been, you've earned yourself a golden opportunity, and you deserve it. Take it and run with it. Anything we can do to help you, please keep us in the loop. It's best to keep the lines of communication open, and I personally wish you the best of luck.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, Alderman Sistrunk.
And, and I wanted to just say, too, that we, we have not made a decision about Cornerstone or what that's going to be, or what parks are going to look like in the future. So right now, we are hiring the position that was vacant, has been vacant since the end of the year. So if, if we add additional responsibilities, if there are other things that will be factored into that position, we'll revisit that position at that point in time. But, but tonight, we are filling the position that was vacant at the end of the year.
Okay, so I have, any, any further discussion? Any further discussion? I have a motion from Alderman Carver, which has been amended to 66. I have the second from Alderman Vaughn, thank you. All right, with no further discussion, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Nay.
Was that a nay, Alderman Little?
Nay.
Nay, thank you.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Okay, by a vote of six to one, this motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Logan. All right, so, all right, I'm passing, passing the motion across. All right, thank you. All right, next item up is discussion consideration for updating the residential parking requirements of the zoning ordinance. Alderman Miller, this one, would you like to take this one? Havilin, I see here, do you want to, him go over this, or what would you like?
I'd like to move approval.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Alderman Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Sistrunk. All right, discussion.
May, may.
Alderman Sistrunk.
And I wanted to address the point that Mr. Stevens, Dr. Stevens, raised, which was using the RVs as residences. This particular ordinance, and, and I've asked this question, and perhaps I should let Mr. Havilin answer it, so if I get my planning language wrong, you, you correct me. This particular ordinance strictly deals with parking on street, in, in a driveway, on, on yard. It, it's not, and, and it, it does not address RVs as residences in the kind of places that one might expect to see RVs as a residence. So did I get that mostly right?
Correct, this is, this is sort of RVs or residential property in front of markets.
So. All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second, without any further discussion, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Nay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of four to three, this motion carries.
Mr. Havilin, could, could you come back just a second? And there are some possibilities for variances, would, would you just let people know that?
There was also a staff, there were various processes you go through to relieve when you're in the park, or this will be a before, but there was a staff recommendation of recovery that there will be a one-year grace period, except for new construction, the park departments would go into that immediately. For existing stuff, a one-year grace period, during that period, warnings would be issued with an explanation of how to comply, and then also during that one-year period, the variance, the applying for a variance in the park ordinance would be waived during the grace period.
And so. There was no mention of the staff recommendations in the motion in the passage.
So if you want to add the, just vote, vote again with the recommendations.
I'll make the motion to, I will move to include the recommendations from the community development staff.
Okay, I have a motion to include with the residential parking requirements of the new zoning ordinance amendment, that it include the staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Sistrunk, further discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Little.
And to be clear, the intent is to relieve any burden on those who might be applying for a variance as we adjust during this process, correct, Daniel? So this is something to help our citizens as they transition to this ordinance, to be clear.
Okay, the staff recommendations, further discussion. All right, hearing none, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Nay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Nay.
Alderman Little.
Nay.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of four to three, motion carries. All right, that moves us to the claim stock and under financing consideration. I have a motion from Alderman Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying ayes as the city clerk calls your name.
I'm going to go.
Yea or, it's okay, yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. All right, and that moves us to the closed determination session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session, or closed determination session, to determine the need for executive session?
So move.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Walker. A motion from Alderman Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying ayes as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, unanimous, we will be going into closed determination to determine the need for executive session, if you would, clear the room, please.